Okay, we're gonna start this meeting off. We're gonna call it to order, this planning commission meeting for the city of Santa Clara on November ninth, 2023. We're gonna start with the opening ceremonies with the pledge allegiance and invocation by myself, Commissioner Blake. If you'll repeat after me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for the blessings we have to live in a peaceful community. We're grateful for the blessings we have to be prosperous here and to be able to come to these meetings, to have opportunities for advancement for our community, for improvements to the community, and for input from the public and for be able to make decisions and put forth ideas. We pray that bless us with thy Spirit to be here with civility, to help us to make good decisions, to help us to be friendly to one another, and always be with us. We thank thee for thy Son and what he has done for us, and we ask for these blessings in his name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item, to our working agenda, and the first item is a public hearing for the, consider the proposed rezoning and project plan for the property of intersection of Pioneer Parkway and the future extension of Red Mountain Drive, lots one, two, and three of Silverado Santa Clara subdivision, strictly east of Harman's and north of Pioneer Parkway. The applicant is Julian Stammers, who proposed to rezone the property from the current planned development residential zone to a planned development commercial zone, to allow for a mixed-use project of both commercial residential uses that's on fourteen point two seven acres. And so I think, I just wanna say, how this usually goes is, we have Jim present this item, and then we allow the applicant to also do a little presentation if they so choose, and then we would open up the public hearing for public comment. So we're gonna go to that point. I will announce when the public hearing's open. Either, do you or Matt, anything else you wanna add to that?
No, thank you for that. I will go ahead and start. Thank you Chair Blake. So as you indicated, the applicant is Julian Stammers, Silverado LLC. They're looking to rezone this property. So it's on the overhead map. We've got three pieces that make up the property. It's just over fourteen acres in size. They have a phase one, a phase two, and a phase three. So the property is currently zoned planned development residential, which would not allow for the commercial uses that you see proposed here along Pioneer Parkway currently. And they're proposing to rezone it to planned development commercial to allow for mixed-use project, which would allow for the commercial you see here on phase three, apartments on phase two, and townhome man cave type units on phase one. Planning Commission may recall that a public hearing was held on July fourteenth of 2022 by the Planning Commission. At that meeting, a motion was made to recommend approval to the City Council. Then on August tenth of 2022, the City Council held a public hearing on this, a public meeting on this item as required by state. As you know, rezonings of property are legislative decisions, which require the City Council to approve or deny such application. A motion was made by the City Council to table the item to allow the applicant to work with adjacent residents and incorporate City Council comments prior to resubmitting. Since that time, we've now received an updated project plan with a rezoning application, and it just includes the three properties that you see. So this area here was previously phase four, and they had proposed a pickleball, a large pickleball facility with a chicken and pickle sports bar and grill. That's not the case anymore. That property has been subdivided and sold to IHC. IHC in the future is looking to do an Instacare facility on that particular piece of property, and that's what we've been told at this time. So just going through the site plan itself, or the project plan, phase one, you see twenty-eight units here, and so that's twenty-eight townhome toy garage units with a second-story living area, so they do include living space. Phase two shows ninety-six apartment units to be in four buildings, so twenty-eight units per building in a three-story structure. Those two phases together are eleven point six six acres, so the units they're proposing here would equate to a density of ten point six three units per acres. Then now, the PDC zone does not require a density bonus if units are proposed that exceed eight units per acre because it's a mixed use. It promotes both horizontal or vertical mixed use. And then the phase three area includes commercial buildings with a square footage of approximately seventeen thousand square feet in these three buildings shown here. The applicant has indicated primarily uses, restaurant-type uses are their idea. Now phase one, as far as amenities go, this is the phase one area, and they would include open space and a trail connection that extends from the pedestrian crossing on Red Mountain Drive. So you see this connection here to this trail down in the wash, the current one, and then you see a pedestrian access across the future Red Mountain Drive, and then a trail easement that could run or will run behind the IHC if that is developed at some point in time to tie in with the existing multipurpose trail we have along Pioneer Parkway. The phase two area, and I've got some, which is here, the apartment project, you see some amenity areas in here, and that includes restrooms with changing areas, a large pool, a hot tub barbecue area, and an outdoor patio structure. And then the phase three includes open space and outdoor seating adjacent to the buildings themselves. So you see proposed outdoor seating here and here, as well as these two spaces here in front of those buildings themselves. Now, I'm gonna go to the actual architectural elevations that are being proposed by the applicant. So as you know, we'll go to phase two first. This is the apartments that they're proposing, and it includes a modern design with an exterior stucco system, metal panel system, aluminum panel system with a wood finish, the metal guardrails and large windows, and then the roof would be a single ply membrane type of system, which is pretty prevalent in the area with Entrada and the new Point of Snow Canyon project, the assisted living, and other buildings that we see in the area with that membrane system. The height proposed is thirty-four feet to the peak. The ordinance currently allows a maximum height of thirty-five feet. And then the second, or phase one, includes the townhome toy garage buildings. This includes also a modern design with an exterior stucco system, a metal panel system, aluminum panel system with wood finishes, metal, and large windows. Excuse me, I was reading from the wrong paragraph. So this includes an aluminum panel system, utilizing both wood and metal finishes, large windows for natural light, a single ply roof membrane system, and then a roof height of twenty-four six is what they're proposing there. And then these are the commercial buildings proposed for adjacent to Pioneer Parkway. This includes a stucco fiber cement or pre-finished metal cladding system, aluminum storefront and windows. The roof will also include a single member, a single ply membrane system, and the height is approximately twenty-one four. As far as open space goes, they do have some calculations on the project plan itself. I don't know why we're getting these yellow bubbles tonight, but the zone requires open space of at least thirty percent. The project plan includes forty percent, just under five acres of open space for the residential areas, phases one and two, with approximately thirty-two percent of open space for the commercial area, which is point eight two acres. We talked about the public trail access system, which they would put in place and be required in coordination with the IHC, as well as the future extension and buildout of Red Mountain would be required. We're promoting landscape and water efficiency throughout the city, so all outdoor water would require secondary water connection and water system. Now, the road cross-sections, we've talked about this previously. You can see this phase one shows a fifty-foot public street from Rachel to the future Red Mountain Drive. That's a public road and would be required to be put in. And then Red Mountain Drive, they'd be required to put in that as well. You know, that's something that's in the works between them and Black Desert, putting such roadway in place. And then this project also includes, because we have commercial and apartments, they're showing a private alley, and the private driveway improvements are required to be twenty-six feet in width, so that's something that would have to be done to meet city standards. As far as parking goes, our code, chapter seventeen thirty-two, requires a total of three hundred and sixteen spaces for this project. They've showed a total of three hundred and eighty-four spaces, a hundred and ninety-two spaces with one covered and one uncovered for the apartment project. Fifty-six spaces are required for the townhome toy garage units, and the commercial uses adjacent to Santa Clara Drive require sixty-eight parking spaces. However, they've provided eighty-four, so there's an additional, there's thirty-four additional parking spaces have been provided to share as needed through the three phases, one, two, and three. They have submitted a soils report. We've talked about this before. It's just a subsurface investigation, and we get this generally for projects that are contemplating a zone change, the sites suitable for various types of development, including commercial residential. So more would be required at a later date. They have had a traffic impact study done by HOROC's engineering. It was updated recently with the change or removal of phase four. They show three access points being assumed with an acceptable level of surface. It also indicates that the traffic signal at the intersection of Pioneer Parkway and Red Mountain Drive, this future intersection there, would be needed by 2029. If not put in place by 2029, the level of service will not be acceptable. However, the city is currently having a study done to move forward with the signal soon. So that contract has been awarded to Avenue Consultants, who specialize in transportation engineering. So the traffic signal will be put in soon, and it will keep the level of service at acceptable levels. So that's something, if you have more questions, our city attorneys here can address that, but we do have fees available to move forward with the future traffic signal. Did you wanna mention that now? Or, okay, let me finish. And then a project narrative was submitted by the applicant. As far as the rezoning goes, we have our standards in chapter seventeen eighteen oh nine, and we have items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H that are in your staff report. And we have the answers there. I don't need to go through every single one of those, but item C is very specific. It says, are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently zoned? And our answer to that is no. It is zoned PDR, but the applicant wants to do a PDC mixed-use project, so they're choosing to submit the rezoning application, and I got that covered in the conditions as well. As far as the general plan consideration, the Planning Commission may recall that a general plan amendment was processed with the city during the summer. On July thirteenth of 2023, there was a public hearing that the Planning Commission held to review the general plan amendment. That was to allow for the mixed-use residential land use designation for lots one and two, so mixed-use residential for these two lots. And then the Main Street commercial designation for lot three, that was later approved. The general plan was approved by City Ordinance twenty twenty-three eighteen, by the City Council on July twenty-sixth of 2023. So that's just land use designations. That's not zoning. That was just a general plan in support of what the applicant is looking at doing. The proposed project plan rezone application includes elements from both the mixed-use residential and Main Street commercial land use designations. Therefore, the proposed use of property is encouraged by the general plan. So as far as the neighborhood response goes, and it looks like we have a good turnout tonight, we did send notices to property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property. The subject property was also posted as per state code. We did not receive any comments as of the writing of this report. And then state code consideration, Utah Code, section ten nine eight two oh five, includes requirements for a rezoning of property or zoning map amendment. So we have met that statute. We're holding a public hearing this evening. We've sent notice out. We posted the property. We do comply with state code requirements. And then the staff, let me go through the city staff recommendation. City staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the submitted rezoning application and project plan to determine if the application is complete. If the application is determined to be complete, city staff would recommend that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the City Council for their review in consideration of the application subject to the conditions, and I have those in the staff report. But I wanna go through condition fourteen, which I mentioned during the rezoning section of seventeen eighteen oh nine oh because it specifically addresses it. It says that the proposed rezoning complies with chapter seventeen eighteen oh nine oh items, except item C below, which has been highlighted. There are not substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently zoned, and the item states, the applicant intends to do a planned development commercial mixed-use project as per the MRU, the mixed-use residential land use designation lots one and two, and Main Street commercial designation lot three of the general plan. And then we have four findings, and the findings are as follows. Number one, that the rezoning is compliant with the Santa Clara City General Plan, section three point four point two, mixed land uses, MUR, Main Street, MUR, mixed-use residential, and MSC, Main Street commercial. Two, that the MRU, the MUR land use designation allows for mostly residential uses, including townhomes, multi-unit buildings, and small lot, single family. Three, the MSC land use designation allows for commercial uses on the ground floor, including stores, restaurants, and offices. And four, the Harman Shopping Center directly west of the subject property is located within the planned development commercial zone. I do have a statement that I would like to read, or do you want to read it, Matt? I was gonna read it. Is that okay? Just for the public and for the Planning Commission. So for the public hearing item, and this is directed to the Planning Commission, your role in considering the application before you is as an advisory body to our City Council. For this application, the City Council is the land use authority and will make the final decision to approve or deny the application. However, the record you are making by conducting this meeting, taking public comment, reviewing, and discussing the application, receiving information from the applicant, being advised by city staff and professionals, and ultimately making a recommendation, all provide information to the City Council that they may choose to consider when they are tasked with making the final decision. Under state law, public comment by itself cannot be the sole basis of your recommendation. However, it can provide context, help identify concerns or questions about the application, inform any conditions or findings you choose to include with your recommendation, provide support for other evidence supporting your recommendation, and so on. All public comment you receive is preserved along with all other information you consider as a legislative body and the land use authority for this application. Sorry, all public comment you receive is preserved along with other information you consider, and as a legislative body and the land use authority for this application, the City Council can decide how to weigh the information and recommendation you provide when they make their final decision. Because your positive or negative recommendation is not a final decision, it cannot be challenged or appealed by anyone. Appeal rights arise only after the City Council's final decision, and it is only that decision which can be challenged. So Chair Blake, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. The applicant is here. I believe he has an engineer and architect with him via Zoom, and City Legal Counsel Matt Ence is here as well.
Just to ask a question, would this be an appropriate time to like, ask a little bit more about the item C, about the previous zoning? I'm told that Matt's the one that knows all about that.
You may have, you may have gotten the wrong idea, but no, I'm kidding. And actually, I have a couple other comments as well, so I'm happy to field any questions now if you'd like to, Chair.
Yeah, I just, I just kinda wanna know what's, it's already, it's PDR, but I'm told it was approved a long time ago, like two thousand and six. I'm just kinda curious what was planned for this area back then.
Yeah. Yeah, so originally, this property and other properties around it was part of a master plan that was referred to as the Knoll Pasture Master Plan. I think it was originally approved in two thousand and six. I think you said two thousand and six, and I think that's correct. I think it was around two thousand and six that that master plan was approved. That, that project never materialized. It did receive entitlements. It did receive certain zone changes. Apologize for the microphones. For some reason, they keep cutting out. But so this PDR that is currently, was previously approved on this property, there was, there was, there's no longer a valid project plan that accompanies that. It's essentially just a, just a PDR designation. And over time, as properties that were previously part of that Knoll Pasture Master Plan have come to the city, we've essentially treated the previous approval as still valid in terms of the designations, but on most of those properties, they've still had to do a zone change. In some cases, they've had to do master plan amendments, or excuse me, general plan amendments. And that's the case with this property as well. So, so I think the way to look at the current PDR designation on this property is as, in some ways, a bit of a historical relic, because there is no, currently no project plan attached to it. So even if the current property owner wanted to, to keep the current PDR designation, they would still have to go through a process of presenting a project plan that could be approved, and that would come through this body and to the City Council, just like a zone change would. So essentially, the process we're going through is, it would be required regardless of what the, the property owner wanted to do with the property. Does that help answer the question?
Well, there's, there's not really any sort of like existing entitlement beyond kind of what's available in the code for them to come through and sort of thing.
Yeah, basically, the, just the bare PDR designation and the opportunity to come back with a new project plan under that designation if they choose to. But beyond that, there's no particular entitlement.
Okay.
Chair, do you mind if I just take another second?
Yeah.
I wanted to address, someone handed to us just at the beginning of the meeting, a document titled Santa Clara Residence Petition. And I just, just for the benefit of those in the audience and for the Planning Commission, first of all, I, I wanna acknowledge this and say, appreciate the effort that went into it. We don't really have a procedure to accept petitions. Those of you that are here tonight and have, have come to the meeting are welcome to come and, you know, during the public hearing, address the, address the commission. I'm, as a courtesy to whoever submitted this, I'm happy to pass it on to the City Council before they make their, before they consider this item. But I would encourage whoever submitted this, if they would like, they can certainly address it during the public hearing. The challenge with petitions, and I'm just, I'm just sharing this just for everybody's information, is there are certain times under the law that a citizen's petition is both appropriate and has, and has legal status. In other words, if, if the city receives a petition for certain things, then the city has to take certain actions in response. In this scenario, there's nothing like that. There's no, there's no procedure for the city to receive a petition or, or any action that's mandated for the city to consider a petition on this type of an action. So the City Council, though, as the legislative body of the city, can consider anything within reason that it wants to, and it makes its final decision, and that's why, that's why I say, happy to pass the petition on to them. The other issue with petitions, just frankly, is when petitions are specifically provided for under the law, there's a procedure that goes along with it, and that's because of due process requirements. You know, this, this petition, and again, I'm not denigrating it at all, but just for, for everybody's information, when something like this is presented, it's hard for us to judge just exactly what weight it should have, because it's essentially a list of names. We don't know what information was shared with the people who, who added their names to the petition. And so, you know, we're just trying to balance all the competing interests in these, when these, when we're considering these applications. Like I said, as a courtesy, I'm happy to pass this on to the City Council. City Council's email addresses are publicly available on the, on the city website, and anyone's welcome to reach out to them and share an opinion about any matter at any time, and I would encourage people to do that, along with coming to these meetings to share your thoughts in a public hearing. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to share that with you this evening. And again, I will pass this on, and the City Council will see it. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. With that, is there, would the applicant like to come add anything to the presentation at this time?
I'll just add a few words. Jim, thank you. You already provided a lot of-
Sorry, say your name.
Oh, Julian Stammers.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. You already provided us with a lot of information. I, I just wanna add a few little things, and some of those might be just repeating what Jim said, but I just wanna make sure everybody here understands that we've been very mindful about this process and very mindful about especially the neighborhood that is adjacent to this property. We started this process a little over two years ago and worked through the process with, with the city staff, so we were able to present for the zone change a little over a year ago, like Jim already elaborated. And as we went through the process, we thought we had a great plan, which included the pickleball center and the chicken and pickle in phase four that we don't have now. But as we went through the process and presented here and Planning Commission got the recommendation to City Council, we just like discovered that there were certain pain points, especially for the adjacent neighborhood and some of the city council members, which those pain points were the gas station and the pickleball center. With the pickleball center, the biggest pain point really was the traffic and the size of it. It would have been twenty-plus courts, indoor courts, some outdoor courts. We thought it would be great to have some space where people can gather. And with the gas station, especially neighbors that are right across Pioneer Parkway, were just, didn't really like the fact to have a gas station there and possible fumes and possible signage and, and things like that. So at that time, Dave Hunter, one of the owners of Silverado Development that I represent today for our development firm, he had neighborhood meetings at that time to make sure that we addressed that. And as you can see in the plan that we present today and that we've presented for the general plan amendment as well, we took our time and made sure that we use this land for its best use, and we had an offer from IHC to put an Instacare there and also discussed that with, with the city staff and ended up selling phase four and giving up that, that phase four for us. And the gas station, we were willing to change that and have a restaurant there. So phase three now does not show a gas station. It shows three restaurant buildings. So just kinda wanted to add that to what Jim has had said. If there's any other questions, I will be happy to try to answer them.
Do you have any commitments from those restaurants or any ideas outside of the IHC?
Nothing that, nothing that we can share. We have a couple restaurants within, within our group. We have a couple associates that, that work with restaurant owners and franchises, and there's, there's a few that we think are very interesting, but that's also something that we want to work on closely with the city staff as they have contacts and ideas as well. But nothing close to being final.
I, I kinda would like you to sort of talk about the affordable housing tax credit thing and then kind of evolve to a ten percent of the project is reserved for ten percent of the first responders or something? Is that, is that what I understood?
So that is, that is something that we started discussing last year when we went, when we went to the City Council meeting, and we're trying to kind of get the votes we needed during the City Council meeting. Development in general has had changed a lot since last summer, as you are all aware. And as the plan had changed, the economy had changed, we worked with the City Council and, and shared with them and shared with- had changed, we worked with the city council and, and shared with them and shared with Jim as well, that we are not able to offer any affordability for these units. They're going to be market rate one and two-bedroom units.
Do you have a demographic you're looking at filling those with?
It can be-
Market research?
We, we, we looked at it. We have property management groups that we work with, with the, with the properties that we own with our group. It could be elderly people that don't want to live in a, in a, in a larger house anymore, or can't afford to live in a large house anymore. It can be newlyweds, it can be young professionals. It's a, it's a wide variety of people that would be attracted to a one or two-bedroom apartment, which, as you were able to see in the renderings, we're trying to create a nice cohesive product throughout this development that people hopefully will be proud to live in.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? We can always, can always ask him later, a little bit further down in the meeting. With that, let's start the public hearing, I think, and have this, get some input from the public. And we'll take your questions, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond at the end of those again. And also, we, we, the planning commissioner can address those. Now, I know, I went back and listened to the, the minutes and the recordings from the previous meetings last summer, and I know that a lot of people thought they weren't able to speak or didn't speak, because only, I think, only one person spoke last time. But, because we have, what we like, you cannot repeat the same talking points over and over again. But I almost would like to hear some of those. And if you would like to get up and say your name and your address for the record and say ditto to some of the previous ones, so that we don't spend a lot of time on going over the same thing over and over again, that would be, I think, appropriate.
Chair, and we do have a timer. We do have that timer, so it's up to three minutes.
We have a three-minute, three-minute timer?
Up to, yes, three minutes.
I'm told, usually, isn't it, if there's like a spokesman, they get a little bit longer? There's like a person that's a spokesman?
Well, that's hard, because some people will tell us they're a spokesperson, and others in the audience don't agree that they're speaking for them. So I think we just go with the three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay.
Yes, because no one has told us they're a spokesperson before this meeting.
Okay. So with that, let's, let's open the hearing. For those who want to come up and speak to the microphone and say your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Helen Zurich, 1838 Red Mountain Drive. Just a couple of questions. Is it all, all possible to make that traffic light a roundabout? And just please don't say no, think about it. And two, are those restaurants five-star, no-star, drive-through restaurants? Any clue? Can we have any idea of what those restaurants might be? Those are my questions.
And what I would recommend is, if there are questions in the public hearing, let's make note of those, and then the developer can address those at the end.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, my name's Joseph Finuti. Most people know me by Joby. I live at 3452 Sage Brush. So we're a little bit outside the 300 feet. I think we're like 450 feet from the boundary. I just want to get up and sit, well, a little bit about my background inside the three minutes. I'm a developer. I have nothing to do with this project, but I have 25-plus years of land development experience. I personally think this is a really good layout. We're really excited about this. We were actually pretty disappointed that the pickleball stuff didn't go through, because that, we thought it was a really good layout. But I'm here because pretty much every city council meeting, you get the 3,000 people that come out to say, actually, it's 30 or 40 that are against it. The people that are for it, we never come out, we never say anything. We really like this. It's a good layout. I think it's a really good use of the commercial. As far as one and two-bedroom units, we've actually been selling two-bedroom units in Hurricane. There's a huge demand for that. It's almost all newlyweds. You've got all the townhomes that are just north of this. Those are filling up more, those are three-bedroom units, which the price point just isn't there for people. Another thing that we really like about this is the trail. It's a great location for the trail to connect, instead of try to stay along in front of Harman's. That's a really busy intersection where everybody pulls into Harman's. And then as far as you guys know, one of the big things that cities are looking for is walkability, and this has that. For kids that are going to be living in those apartments, they can walk to the school, they can walk to Harman's, they can walk to the hospital. It's a big deal, especially for, for families. A lot of young families where they only have one car. But for me personally, because I live right there, I mean, I love this idea. I wish I had the money to put it together and do it. It's a, I, I think it's a great use of space. I love that the apartments are sunk down in where they're, you know, that's a lower part of the property. Personally, I wish the whole thing was going to be commercial, because that's what worries me in Santa Clara the most. You only have a certain amount of spaces you can put in commercial. So I'd rather see a whole bunch of restaurants in there instead of apartments, but it's their land, it's private property. That's all I want to say. I just think it's a, a really good layout, and I think they've spent a long time to answer a lot of people's questions. And just remember, there's over 8,000 of us in the city, and just because 30 or 40 show up to say they don't like it, there's probably 7,000 that don't care. So it's a good thing.
My name is James Spindel. I live at 3474 Robin Court, so directly opposite Pioneer Parkway from the development. And both question and recommendation in the previous version of the map, it had the commercial property with the parking on the inside of the property, meaning that the back of the commercial buildings faced Pioneer Parkway. And in the current rendering that's up on the screen, that's not the same way it is, which would mean that the lights from those buildings would shine directly towards my house, the front edge of those would. And it's opposite from all of the buildings at the corner of Pioneer Parkway and Rachel, other than the Ace Building. I was wondering if there was a reason why that was changed, and without the reasoning for why it's changed, if we could put that back, it would make me feel much better about it being directly opposite from those buildings, so I don't have the light shining in there. That's my only comment and recommendation. Oh, actually, it's not. I was wondering what, is the elevation of the buildings starting from Pioneer Parkway, or is it higher or lower than Pioneer Parkway? The 35 feet, like for the, the apartment buildings, what's the starting elevation?
The 35 feet would be measured from the adjacent grade of it, or wherever the pads establish. It wouldn't be relative to Pioneer Parkway.
Okay. We don't know if it's going to, are they going to fill it up to level with Harman's and then build it?
We'd have to ask the developer that, if he's got any preliminary-
Chair, I, sorry, I would just recommend we hold the questions till the end. That way-
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, those are my two-
Yeah, that, that way we can just continue with the public hearing and, and do all the questions together at the end, so.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Let me say how much I appreciate this opportunity and-
Sorry, can you-
Can you hear me now?
Can you say your name and I-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Joseph Robinson, 3834 Brenner Drive. And I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you here. I want to thank you for clarifying the zoning situation with respect on the original zoning of the property. And, and I think that's going to clarify some things in people's minds about what their concerns are and what they want. And I think the majority of people in our community where we live, we really would like to have that all residential, but be that as it may. I want to answer, you brought up something I think is extremely important about affordable housing, and I want to, if I may, just read this very quickly, under the headings of overdevelopment. Overdevelopment is the approval of building of desert village, which is 185 multifamily units in the name of affordable housing that now has rents approaching $2,400 a month. In my community, just adjacent, where Blackhawk and those other condos are, those rents are up, up to $1,900 to $2,000 a month. Overdevelopment is one involving, only involving 100, was it 300 and, let me put my glasses on. Overdevelopment is only having 381 single-family homes north of Pioneer Parkway already built or planned compared to 691 townhomes or apartments and 277 vacation rentals in the same area. That's 968 total multifamily or vacation rentals, when multifamily and vacation rentals units outnumber single-family homes by almost three to one. That's overdevelopment, not responsible development, in my opinion. I'll speak for myself, although there are a large number of residents that feel that same way. I, I appreciate the efforts that the developer has gone into in doing this. I just, giving my personal opinion, I, I just, we just don't need any more multi-high-density units. Affordable housing has been sold and sold and sold to the, but this body, or primarily the city council, has never turned out to be affordable housing. It's expensive. And yet it keeps getting approved and getting approved. Do you have any idea what these units are going to go for in the rentals?
Market rent?
We'll save that. That's a question.
Okay. Well, that's market rental. I can tell you what that's going to be, and it's not going to be cheap. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Also, the, I think when you talked about the petition, I think, I'm, I was one of the signatures on there, I think, petition. I think, as you said, probably better served if we said it was a, a request by residents for consideration.
Better.
And that way, but I do appreciate you giving that over to the city council. Thank you for your time.
My name is Lynette Hughes. I'm 3485 Red Butte Drive, two blocks south, as the crow flies from Harman's. I'm, and maybe you can just answer this quick question that would impact what I'm trying, going to share. Is this land privately owned, or is this land that the city of Santa Clara still owns? Privately owned, that's what I thought, okay. That, that said, as I understand, it's really the last developable, developable land in Santa Clara. And I get from some of the other comments, this has been going on a long time, many years. We've only been in the area for about seven years right now. I'm very, very concerned as the last gentleman spoke about the overdevelopment, about what's happening. We cannot sit in our backyard at night and peacefully have a quiet night. The infrastructure, the amount of traffic and the cars and the sirens and everything, it is, we're two, like I say, we're two blocks away and we've never, I guess we're not right behind the development, so we don't ever receive a letter, and we've never been asked for any kind of comments. But I will avoid Pioneer Parkway like the plague. I come from the Wasatch Front, where you had to, could only go out at a certain time. You had a time you're leaving and going to your home because of the high-density traffic and all of that type of a thing. We came here thinking that that wasn't going to be the case. Well, I have to time when I leave my home to go on Pioneer Parkway because of the traffic. And I, that's not what the people of Santa Clara want. That's not what this community is about. We don't need that extra traffic. And I, I appreciate the amount of effort that's been put into this project and all the times they've come back and trying to appease people and that type of a thing. But my question is, why does it have to be developed? Can't we push pause? Nobody has a crystal ball to be able to see what the needs of this community are going to be 20, 30, maybe even 50 years down the road. What are we doing to the legacy for our children and those that are going to come beyond to have their needs met? Because it's not affordable housing. It's not something that our children can come in and buy the newlyweds and that type of a thing, even to be able to afford rent. They're having to leave the community because there is nothing available for them to be able to stay. I would really appreciate this council, the city council, I attend those meetings and I can as well, to take the long view and push pause on this. Let it be. There's been a lot of development in the time that we have been here, and I know in the last 10 years. And I do not think it's something that we need. I do not think it's something that's going to benefit the residents of Santa Clara. I get what, we have not a lot to say about what's happening in Ivans and all of the building that's going on. Pioneer Parkway cannot sustain another 300-plus parking spaces and the traffic that comes and goes from that every day with the development over by the, the middle school. And I would appreciate it not happening. Thank you.
My name is Harold Welling. I live at 1836 Red Mountain Drive. I would tailgate off, no pun intended, some of her comments, particularly about traffic patterns. And though there's many things to address, that's been brought up several times. And I'm wondering if those traffic patterns include each of the new developments, such as Black Rock and Silverado and Harman's and the things that have gone in, or if they just address what kind of traffic patterns would be changed because of, of a specific development. And just in the time that we've lived here, that section of Pioneer Parkway that goes through the wash has not only partially, I guess because of construction, but also the new traffic needs, gone up immensely. And talk about sirens and, and traffic going all the time. If any consideration has been given to maybe the south side of that having some sound barriers in the wash area specifically, because that, Highway 18, I believe it is, generates quite a bit of traffic. And with each new development, it seems that, that there's going to be an addition to that traffic pattern. So I'd like to know what criteria and futuristic views there might be on that kind of traffic. Thank you.
Hi, and I'm Janine Burton. I live on 31 Bedrock Circle. I have a question about the land over, where I think they were planning to put an IHC hospital or something. Is there a way to get a Costco on this end of the, the, end of the valley?
And reduce traffic, right?
Yeah. I'm just wondering. It would be really nice. Have you been to Costco lately? It would be really nice to have one on this end. If we could talk them into that instead of IHC. That's all. That, that's all.
She's all right.
Hi, again, just a quick question or comment. Helen Zurich, 1838, 1838 Red Mountain Drive. Has there been a water usage study or the study that says we're going to have enough water for, I can't remember how many buildings, or houses, 300, but do we have enough water to, that will be available for this development whenever it's finished?
Yeah. And Chair, that, that was the second time she came up. Usually, we allow them to come up once and provide comment, but we'll answer that question.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak from this item? I mean, I know there's another item that's a public hearing coming up, but-
I'm Leslie Benson, and I live at 1866 Red Mountain Drive. First, I want to thank the city again for the big public hearing signs that really appreciated the change that's occurred in the last year, so that those that are, that aren't close enough to receive a letter can still be aware when important issues come up. And I am one of those that am very grateful that the developer responded to our concerns about the gas station and the pickleball. We're grateful that those are off the agenda now. But my concern, and I'm the one who initiated the petition, and I, it was, it is more for city council, but I just thought I would let everyone else see. As one person on this commission told me that they had heard no objections to the apartments. And in just one day, I had 142, I think, signatures the last time I looked. And our main concern with this development is the apartments and the amount of high-density housing. One other gentleman already gave you all the numbers of how many townhomes, how many vacation rentals there are. And then there was just now a, a new project approved right off of Red Mountain, I mean, off Pioneer Parkway and Patricia Avenue and- and Patricia Avenue and Northeast. That's all mainly townhomes again. Most of us, again, someone else mentioned this, but the reason we're here is we love the small-town feel, the beauty of all the recreational areas and open space, and are just saddened to see how fast the area is changing and we're losing what is stated as in your, in the Santa Clara City General Plan goal of being a vibrant, small-town community. So we hope that you'll not recommend the rezoning and keep the PDR rezoning so that they'll be restricted to 30 apartments and no more. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, we're going to close this, close the public hearing for this item, for this Silverado development. And we'll move on to, let's see, let's see, make sure I'm right here.
We do have the questions that were asked, and the developers here as well. So I did-
So what do you want to do now, or are we moving general business first?
I'd leave that up to you, Chair. I was just gonna, just gonna mention that I do have to leave in a few minutes for a family commitment. So I just wanted you to know that if I do walk out, it's not for any other reason, so.
Yeah, that's, I wrote down a bunch of these questions. Let's go through them. If you want to talk, or your traffic engineer wants to come up at some point.
So I can read through them. The first question was asked-
It was a roundabout.
Well, what type of restaurants and the roundabout?
Right.
So that was questions one and two.
Let's do the restaurants and say the roundabout for the-
Which I think you mentioned earlier, you have some in mind, but you're not going to give out names at this point, so, but.
Well, it's just hard to give a name and then take it back if we can't do it.
So one, I have a question about just the buildings. Are these, these aren't going to be, are they one unit, or are they going to be like?
So-
Broke off into like multiple-
With retail, especially restaurants, in different, restaurants need different square foot sizes. So the buildings that we intend to build are each 6,000 square feet. And if you put in Restaurant A, Restaurant A might need 6,000 square feet, or Restaurant B might need four or three. So some of those buildings may have one, two, or three tenants with one main tenant and one or two smaller, smaller tenants. Or it might be two or just one. That's just something that we don't know as of right now. The way that this site is designed is that all three of the buildings allow for one drive-through user. As you can see, there are three drive-throughs. As of right now, I don't have any more, any more detail than that when it comes to the restaurants.
Question about roundabouts is unique. I mean, I know Ivans does, does them. We haven't done them here in Santa Clara, and I, we can't even answer that at this point. It's just a rezoning and project plan. That's something that could be considered and looked at if they got further down the line to where something would happen and site plan reviews were being done with road improvements and drawings. And I think Commissioner Blake, you know that, you understand some of that as a professional engineer by trade.
Right, but I know there's traffic engineers here tonight, so we could probably ask her to. I don't know if it's probably not been contemplated, but I know there's some, some weaknesses to those in certain instances. And so it, it might be good just to kind of help the public understand that, but. So that was the restaurants. I have, one of the questions I personally have, and it was asked by a resident, was why are they not on Pioneer? Why are they, why is the parking lot in the front?
Well, so that has been city staff as part of that. We've gotten pushback from elected officials and others that if you go to our Four Corners area up there, off of Pioneer Parkway where Geovingo Building 1 is, and Geovingo Building 2 is being built now, where the soda mix is and that drive-through there, there hasn't been a lot of happiness about the way that turned out and the way that looks, just putting that drive-through right next to the road and the way that, that looks. And they would prefer that the building be pushed back and the drive-through be partially screened rather than just putting the drive-through right out next to Pioneer Parkway as kind of welcome into our city. Welcome to Santa Clara, here's all the drive-throughs. So the idea is, let's, let's put them back and kind of screen them with the building. So that's the thought. Again, that's a site plan issue further down the line, but this is what they're showing right now. And that's the, the way that we've discussed this at a city staff level at this point. But it comes into play that those drive-throughs right next to the road aren't things that people are liking. And that's the direction we've been given, so. Others may see that differently. I have seen some jurisdictions that don't allow drive-throughs next to roadways at all. Or if you do a drive-through, you have to berm in landscape high enough to where you're only picking up the tops of the cars. Or the developers decide to, you know, redo the site and try to hide those drive-throughs like they're doing here. The other thing is all the queuing and stacking. I mean, if you go into St. George, how many of those drive-throughs have we seen right next to the road? And then you get some queuing onto the roadway, which is unsafe as well, into, into maybe the apartments, into Red Mountain Drive, so that's kind of a concern as well. So it's something further down the line. Again, this is project plan and zoning. That's more down into the weeds, down into the detail later on. That still could change. We know commercial projects change, site plans change. It just depends on who the end user is, so.
And just us, we are from, from the developer side, we're open to both. We, as we went through the last couple technical review, the TRC meetings with city staff, the previous version showed it just the other way around. And there's reason to do both. And to get the recommendation from the TRC to move to this meeting today, they wanted us to change it. So if further down the road, and as we get more and more specific, if it turns out that it's better the other way around, we're open.
Our concern was, is the design showed three drive-throughs next to Pioneer Parkway. That was like the prevalent thing on the site. You can see the drive-through next to Red Mountain Drive. The building's been turned 90 degrees and putting a little bit of that impact on Red Mountain Drive rather than putting all the impact on our major gateway into the city. So that's the thought. Still subject to change, but this is a starting point.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought, because it's contemplated the other way in the code and the general plan. So I was just kind of curious where it came from. But I, I get that the, the drive-throughs in this market and the mentality of the people, everybody wants one, so.
Right, and the idea also is, you know, they would put a wall there and that drive-through would be more towards the apartment community rather than towards the street and the residents that live across the street, the current residents.
Let's see. I think someone brought up the whole thing being, wanting the whole thing to be commercial. To me, it seems like that's already been addressed with the general plan amendment. It seems like the city council was okay with this being residential and being, the commercial being shrunk down. You have a, do you want to address that comment about more of it, more of it being commercial? And why?
I mean, as of right now, it's a PDR zone, so we wouldn't have to do any commercial. For us, two and a half years ago, it would have been a lot easier process to say, let's just build all of these townhomes. And if we don't look at the whole project that we sold off to IHC, but just looking at this 14.27 acres, we could do over 100 townhomes. And it would have been very straightforward, easy, but I don't think it would have been the best and highest use for the city. And so we decided to come up with a plan together with city staff that might be better than that, which meant to give some commercial to the city that is facing Pioneer Parkway and utilizing that corridor to be able to also have some tax bases to the city. But then really kind of wedging in those apartments, because now we have IHC to the, to the east, then we have restaurants to the south end of it, and Harmon's to the west. I think is a, is a great spot to have those apartments. You don't want to have residential lots there or townhomes there. I think if there is a space to have those apartments, that is a great space. And as it was mentioned by one of the residents, it creates walkability. It's kind of hard to see on this, this plan, but we intend to have a stairway go up to the Harmon's so people that, that go and live in these apartments can, can walk to Harmon's, can go grocery shopping, can walk to the restaurant. So it creates, creates that walkability factor. I hope that answers the question of why we're doing some commercial and still mainly residential.
The next one was the elevations or the building height.
Yeah.
Did you have a response to that, Logan, or our building official can, our building official can respond to? Go ahead.
I was just curious if you've done any preliminary grading on this, or if you have an idea of?
Yeah, I actually have renderings as well, that whoever's interested can just text me or email me. My phone number is 801-698-8984. And you can email me your, text me your email address, and I'll be willing to share those renderings. And those renderings-
Are they different than the ones in the packet that are?
I don't know if they're on there, to be honest. They're just, they're additional renderings that show kind of from the corner of Red, Red Mountain Road and Pioneer Parkway.
I think they might be there. Scroll down-
Are they there?
Commercial.
That, that show the elevation.
That one, can you zoom in on that?
It's not, that's not-
That's not the one?
No.
No.
And I'll be, I'll be happy to share that to whoever is interested. I have it on my phone, so I can show it to anybody.
We don't.
I have it on my phone, so I can show it to anybody who's interested after this meeting and happy to share it in an email. With the grading as it sits and how we intend to work on the site, almost a full story of the apartments is basically buried if you look from Pioneer Parkway. So if you're on Pioneer Parkway, the retail and the apartments are almost the same height, even though the apartments are nine feet taller. And that is just because of the different grading on the site. And again, we've had that put together by our architect, Jay Taggart. And, and because we had residents ask for that, and Jared Wade, one of the city councilmen, specifically asked me for that and shared it with some of the residents. I don't know if any of the residents that are here today.
So just to reiterate, your retail, retail buildings are about 22 and a half feet, relatively the same height as from, basically from Pioneer Parkway up to 22 and a half?
It'll, I mean-
It might go up a little bit, or?
It'll, it'll be, there's going to be some, yeah, but it's not- You won't have a full story stick out. You won't.
For the retail buildings?
You, for the, if you're on Pioneer Parkway and you look on this development and you think there's a three-story apartment building behind the retail, then you would assume that a full story of the apartment building would stick up on top of the retail. But because of the elevation, it goes down quite a bit, that it, it almost doesn't, like, you almost don't see it beyond the retail.
Right, but the question was asked about the retail and their elevation, their relative, how relative they were to-
I don't, I don't have the answer-
To Pioneer Parkway?
To Pioneer Parkway exactly. Jay Taggart and Alan, is Alan on the call?
Yeah, I can answer that.
If you guys can answer that.
This is Jay Taggart. We did, we did some studies like Julian mentioned with renderings and also some session cuts. And from Pioneer Parkway, those apartments sit about five, five feet plus below what Pioneer Parkway is. And so as a person standing across the street from this development, most, if not all of the apartments, a large majority of them will be screened by the commercial buildings because of the height, how they sit down.
And the commercial buildings will be about the same relative, the pad, like the parking lot of the commercial be relative, the same relative elevation as Pioneer Parkway?
Yeah, as you know, Pioneer Parkway slopes, so we kind of took a section closer up towards Harmon's that way, through the first building. And that commercial pad sits about a foot below. Since then, though, we've shifted these retail, when we first did this study, so that the parking's in front. So they'll even screen it more, because as they're closer to a building, you won't be able to see them as much.
Okay, I, I think that answers that. See, moving on-
Let's see, I had about rents, market rents, how much? The applicant said market, so I don't know what that is.
Yeah, that, I mean, that fluctuates with, I mean, just with other apartments that we have built, it really just fluctuates with the market. Sometimes you have to give concessions, sometimes rents go up, sometimes rents go down. But just in my personal experience, I, I'm married and I have two kids, little twin girls, and we live in an apartment, because right now, in this, these current market conditions, we can't, we can't, and where house prices are, we can't afford to buy a house. And I know that, and rents for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom that are somewhere between, let's just say 15 to 1900 bucks, or even three-bedroom units, they're at 22 to 2500 bucks, seem like a lot, especially if you look at house prices and financing, how it was a couple of years ago, or, or more than that. But in the current market, if you look at buying a home, it's going to be three to four, four and a half thousand dollars a month, including everything. It is just, it is very hard to get into that if you're newlywed, if you have a young family, or if you're a young professional after you just graduated. And we're addressing that market.
Okay, the next question was traffic patterns. What about the other areas, futuristic views? Now, they did submit a traffic impact study. HOROC's engineers, you may have a representative here tonight, but they, they've done what's required for rezoning. And it's required to do a study for their property and the impacts it would have to surrounding areas. They're not required to do traffic studies for everybody else in the area. But HOROC did a very thorough traffic study for this project. So I don't know, is Aaron Baker here, or who do you have?
We have, we have Emily with us. Maybe you can give just a quick, quick overview of the impact.
Seemed like it was comprehensive, though, of the area and Pioneer Parkway and Rachel and-
Sure, we'll let her speak to it.
Sure, I'm Emily Andrus, I'm with HOROC. I'm, I work with Aaron Baker, he's my direct supervisor.
That's correct. I remember you now.
Yes, yes. So I'm happy to speak to some of these things. I took a couple notes as well for these questions. We, yeah, our traffic study addresses all of the intersections that are adjacent to this, adjacent to this project. We also took into account the traffic that will be coming from the north on Red Mountain Drive, as far as we knew at the time of this study. So we used a traffic study done by Avenue to build up our background traffic to add this development traffic on top of, in order to kind of account for some of the traffic that'll be coming from Red Mountain Road. So it didn't take into account all of Black Desert, but it did take into account some of those townhome developments that are going in just north of this. And like was mentioned, there will be a signal at this intersection, and that will relieve the majority of the concerns in this area, I think, as far as level of service goes and delay as a, as a driver.
And, and the good thing about that, it's been announced to your group as well as Black Desert, that the city has impact fees available to have that study done and put a signal in soon. The traffic signal is going to be going in very soon. It's not going to wait till 2029. It's going to probably go in, I don't know the exact date, but that's being studied. And the city's utilizing fees that have been collected to do that study and put the signal in. And then the developers will do the other improvements that are required.
Right. And that, that addresses, our traffic study, what it came up with is that the thing, the places that will suffer the most are the accesses coming out of, out of Harmon's and out of this development. Trying to turn left would be really difficult on Pioneer Parkway. And what a signal will do is it'll give a place for people to turn left without having to wait a significant amount of time. So the other question that I wrote down, and it was kind of already discussed already, just a signal versus a roundabout. And the thing about a roundabout is that it takes up a lot of space, and there's already development on, you know-
There's two houses that probably don't want to get up to the right of it.
That come right up to the back of the sidewalk, yeah. And so the space probably is not there for a roundabout, and a signal also has more capacity long-term.
And will move traffic better, likely.
Yes, yeah, in the, in the long-term, definitely. I also just wrote a note that a year ago, when we did this traffic study, we also did a noise study on Pioneer Parkway. And it was determined that the noise levels are not, the increase in noise from this development and that- the increase in noise from this development and that at that time it included the pickleball facility would not be significant enough to notice to the human uh perception. Uh, that's just the results of the noise study from a year ago and that now is the pickleball is not on the table, so um take that for what it's worth.
Traffic, my understanding up here is mostly coming from islands beyond the development, right? Is that is that that's just an impact in the study, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's true. Um, the majority of that traffic on Red Mountain will be coming from Black Desert and from Snow Canyon Parkway for people trying to go south.
I do remember that now, the sound study, because you and Aaron had spoken about that last year.
Mm-hmm.
And that question was asked, because I mean, it's commercial, it butts an arterial, this is an arterial roadway. One of the few, you know, we have this arterial and we have Santa Clara Drive.
Lanes in it eventually, right?
Correct, correct, and it's currently uh the average daily trips are somewhere between nine to ten thousand trips a day and it's been designed for up to twenty thousand because it is an arterial, so.
Right, yeah, that's a great point. So I'm I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
I think that answers question seven about sound and barriers. The last one I had was, well, Janine Burton brought up a good question about bringing Costco here. I've reached out to them several times. I'm still, they don't reply. They don't respond, they don't get back to us. The rumor I've heard is Hurricane, so if they do want a hurricane, maybe it'll free ours up. So that's all I can say on Costco. And then the other one, item A to water, you know, the question about water and if we have the availability and the capacity.
Thank you, Emily.
That's why we are working with the Washington County Water Conservancy District. That's why we have a Water Efficient Land Use Ordinance, Section seventeen ninety-two. That's why the Conservancy District's here tonight to do some slight amendments to that program to allow us to be part of their rebate program, you know, taking grass out and and doing drought tolerant zero escape type of design instead. We are there, we are getting, we are planning for future growth and development into the future, ten, twenty years out, by reducing the amount of water that each home will utilize and the requirements that are in place, so that is something that has been discussed and contemplated.
The city council just, didn't they just recently pass a new impact fee study for the city?
Yes.
That got passed, right?
That as well.
And that that impact fee says current and contemplates all the growth for this, at least there was a designation in there, I looked at it quite a bit.
Right, the idea is cutting the, right.
Growth amount for this parcel, and so they're anticipating that, and the water district's anticipating that. So I think the water's there for it.
There was a question about lighting.
Lighting.
Yeah, that was part of the drive-through and the lighting. Um, you know, that's something that we can work with the business owners if needed or necessary. I know the project I talked about earlier, uh Geo Vango, Building One and Two, Building Two right now is where Jersey Mike's and Blow Dry Bar and some of those are going in. Building One is where the Royal Thai is and the Aloe Care and the Soda Mix. And then we have O'Reilly's and the Dollar Tree. They've been asked to turn their signs off at ten o'clock at night, and so that would be something that could be discussed here later on as these projects develop, if we feel it's needed or necessary. I don't know at this point, but it's something that we can consider at a later point in time. Being a good neighbor, so.
I think there was a question brought up about why this isn't going to be P D R and why did you do P D C relation to the apartments. Has that been discussed in T R C or with the developer?
What was the question?
So I know in the code it says, I think it was brought up, the code talks about if you do P D R, you're only do thirty apartments unless you apply for.
Correct.
Probably not stuff in social.
Well, you you have to do the affordable housing with the state of Utah, the housing assistant, Utah Housing uh type of project, if you go P D R to do that type of density. That's correct.
Do you want to address that specific part of?
Sure, um, I mean, the way that we.
You may have already kind of talked about a little bit, but.
Yeah, we we kind of talked about it a little bit, but the way that we, to just iterate again, um, address this is uh let's change from P D R to P D C. That gives us the density to be able to do apartments, to give a variety of housing um to the city, to give some commercial to the city. We wanted to do the pickleball center, which which would have been significant tax uh revenue as well. Um, now it's gonna be an I H C, which is commercial to the city. So we we just see as we went through this whole process over the last couple of years, that we are willing to give those things, change those things, change our plans um to be able to get that rezoned, to be able to also do the apartments. Yeah, I hope that answers your question.
I guess my question about that is, can it be um broken into parts where one and two are are zoned so you can do um leave them P D R and still have commercial on the street? I'm a fan of the commercial, since that is the only place we have really left to do that in our city. But the density is a concern for me with the apartment buildings.
That's the, I think that's one of the reasons why the P D C is is because of the requirement to do the government-involved subsidized housing sort of aspect to it in the P D R, but, right?
That's a tough one to answer. Um, we.
Well, we're we're really getting down into the weeds here. Um, so the the P D R for them.
Sorry, I just, I've been looking at that, so I've been contemplating this stuff.
The P D R, um, for them to get the higher density that they're looking at requires affordability. And that requires you working with Utah Housing to do a project or affordable, to do a project that exceeds thirty apartment units.
Right.
As you know, Desert's Edge, the project that Robert Smith went through the process and he's here tonight later for a plat amendment, he got that density because he has worked with Utah Housing to do housing at thirty to eighty percent of A M I, area median income. It would be our first project and a good majority of them will be at fifty percent of A M I. That's been quite a pool, quite a task for him. So uh that has not been but been what they've proposed. Um, they have proposed a P D C, which is a mixed-use zone. And the mixed-use zone doesn't require the density bonuses or the affordability aspect to get more units. The P D C allows for a horizontal mixed-use or a vertical mixed-use, but doesn't tie it down or doesn't restrict it to that that requirement that the P D R does. So there's differences here. And that's why they're asking for it, but ultimately, um, you know, the planning commission, your your task is to make a recommendation to the council and then the council will decide.
Council decides, flush out all the.
Yes.
That sort of stuff.
Yeah, on that.
Um, I think that kind of covers all the questions for, from that brought up in the public hearing. Do you have any more?
So, um, you mentioned the parking for the whole project being in excess of, is it thirty-six spots?
It's oh, it's got additional parking.
Is, does each phase have adequate parking or are you, okay.
Each phase has adequate parking, plus there's an additional amount of spaces. I don't have that number right in front of me, but they're you know, I don't like to say overparked because we know projects need parking, right? But it's fifty-five, sixty additional spaces that they have that have been spread out throughout the project, so.
Beyond what's required.
Yeah.
In the code. Okay. So I I guess with that, we move on to general business for this item, item four A one, where we make a recommendation to the city council for this proposed rezoning, project plan for on the property, at the property of this intersection for Red Mountain Drive. Um, so that would be just further discussion among planning commissioners, any comments that you would like to make out made or issues you want to bring up or reasons for or against the recommendation?
Well, I'm thankful for those that have showed up tonight, the the citizens that have expressed, it's good to hear, you know, Mr. Van Ude that shows up and expresses his, he liked the idea, you know, so often do we not have those that come and support these sometimes tough decisions. It's good to hear that there are people that are informed, so it's good to have those. So we we need to encourage more citizens to get out, whether they're for or against or have concerns and so I like that and I appreciate those comments tonight. I like the idea, I know it's I've heard commented that it'd be nice to just keep it residential, but we also have to remember that this is really our last opportunity for a commercial in Santa Clara, at least the way things are zoned right now and unless we want all of our property taxes to increase, we've got to find some way to get a tax base and this this property is you know, it'd be nice to put a Costco in and be able to bring tons and tons of tax revenue, but that's not where we're at right now and who knows if it is in the future, but I I think this commercial, this is an opportunity for commercial and tax revenue for our city, so I like the idea of the way this is looking.
Do I go next or you?
I can, I feel the same way. I I appreciate everybody coming out and expressing their opinions and listening and sharing. I think one of the residents said it's amazing what the developers have done with this and tried to take people's input, city council residents, and try to come up with something that is the best that can be done. Um I I I think it's a good project they've they've designed. There are some negatives and I think you mentioned the apartments um can be seen that way, but I think they've done the best compromise, so.
I also appreciate you all coming and making your comments and the phone calls that I've received from some residents about their concerns with the project. I am concerned about our limited commercial space, so I really like that there is commercial in this project. But I am also concerned about the density and I think less apartment buildings would be appropriate in that area. It is not that much space. And I like the the toy garages things, whatever those are. And I do appreciate that you've made so many um improvements to the property. So I'm still thinking about it.
The I H C hospital is a great community asset.
Yeah, it it would be an Instacare, um, is what they're telling us.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so they would, they're gonna come separately. Uh, it could be that they have a retail pad out in front too, because it is five acres, so. But we'll see. I H C's definitely bought the property, so.
Um, some of my thoughts on this are I I I neglected to ask this question about cross-access easement agreement. Is that something that's been in place with Harman's, with that other entrance? Just is that become the staff?
Well, that's something that's been discussed. It's uh, you you know, we want that cross-access or reciprocal access agreement in place. Uh, recently Frank Lundquist, who was the longtime, I don't, vice president or our contact with um Harman's has passed, and so there's a new individual involved. But that would be something that would be more discussed more thoroughly during site plan review and and other items. And then the other thing is um the council would require a development agreement. That's not something that the planning commission gets into, but that's something that has been addressed in the development agreement that legal counsel Matt Ence is working on with their legal counsel. Just like any project, it's in a draft format right now, but just like any project, those things would be addressed in a development agreement. So.
Um, my 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 concern, we already talked about it, was why they were in the front and the back. I like the look of them in the front. I I personally am not a huge fan of the look of these retail buildings. I, they just look so much different than the rest of them. I I just, I'm not a personal fan of that. I don't know how I agree how it feels in that one, it's not really been discussed, but um, I think, you know, the apartments, I've been, this has been on my mind like a lot this past like week or so, looking at this and wondering if if it was to dance, if the code contemplates this sort of thing. I know there is a need for this. There's a lot of market research out there for, like the developer said, that you have this upcoming generation of young marriages that's looking for one, two-bedroom apartments and you have the outgoing generation of the the outgoing generations retirees that are looking to downsize and they're all fighting for the same units and they're not available. They're just not around because, mostly because they, well, they can't, they're hardly get approved and that sort of thing. Um, you know, because a lot of people just don't like them. I I get the idea of wanting to make these, do the P D R, so you have to do that aspect of it, but then, I don't know, mark fair market rate is what it is and and my my theory with affordable housing is it's, I have a similar view of affordable cars. You the new ones aren't affordable, but the used ones are, and you gotta have new ones for the people living in the affordable ones to vacate to the new ones, so. We all saw the rise in used car prices during the pandemic because there wasn't any new ones, but so the density, I mean, it's it's high, but if you amortize it out over the whole project, it's similar to some of the ones that the ones that else are up there. But like I said, a lot of people do believe that there's there's a lot of it going on, but this is, this is, I think it's gonna be pretty isolated, kind of little part of it by itself and the young marriages are awesome. I know, I know in my neighborhood, the A D Us are becoming more and more prevalent to meet this one-to-two bedroom need. And maybe we could solve it with that. I don't, a lot of people have plans to build A D Us, but I think they're awesome and all the young married couples that are living in them are awesome people and um, they're great people to have in the neighborhood, so I mean, that's that's where the children live and these could be places for seniors to live too that want to downsize, that want to come here without having to maintain a yard and want to go play a bunch of golf at the at the resort or something like that, so. So that's that, those aspects of it, I'm not really concerned about, but my biggest reasons I don't like are the, that they're not fronting the street. I want that look. I want, I like the cohesive look of having the buildings front of the street. I get that the drive-through site is ugly, so that might be something you have to, you have to compromise on.
And it could be that drive-throughs go away, you know, we've asked that and that's not something they want to concede, but, yeah.
Well, all the other ones have, like, one of them's got two on the same building, so it's, it is, that that is what the people want. People want to go to the drive-through, so you kind of have to, it's hard to get tenants if you don't have those. So, but I my my uh, I really don't like the, I don't like the way they, I don't know if I could, you can't really do a partial recommendation based on the look of the retail buildings, but that's my own, that's my biggest like thing other than the the facing the street, but. So anybody else has any comments, want to say anything else on this or?
I don't, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we forward this application to rezon the Silverado subdivision lots one, two, and three from planned development residential P D R zone to the planned development commercial P D C zone to the city council with an approval, subject to the fourteen staff recommendations that are listed.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitehead and a second by, gosh, now I'm freezing up, what's your names?
Harris.
Harris, yes. Um, let's do a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, starting, starting here.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
That is a hung jury. So that's a no recommendation.
So what we can do here, and this did happen uh in the last several months with um Clayton Levitt's Pioneer Point project, it was at a standstill. So it was determined that evening that it would go to the city council with no recommendation. And that was at the advice of legal counsel Matt Ence, who had to step out. So a tie vote would be no recommendation to the council, which they would still, you know, decide on the item next month.
Unless we make a different recommendation.
A substitute motion that you can agree upon. I just am bringing that up because last time no one wanted to make a substitute motion, so it's up to the planning commission.
Any other motion at this time?
Is there a way to appease me, I guess, with addressing the look of the buildings?
Well, it'll come back later, won't it, at point, it'll, it's gonna come back.
Yes.
The building.
This, this is just, um.
For rezon.
You know, we're sitting, I don't want to say thirty thousand feet, maybe we're sitting about ten thousand feet, but definitely. but definitely has to come back after rezoned to go through thorough site plan reviews for, for the commercial. And then the residential components will be subdivision reviews where we'll, we would, because of the zoning being in the PD. We have to drill down on all of that detail later on.
So the elevations of the buildings aren't set in stone and how that's actually going to look. It's just, we're, we're approving like the general location, the density calc in the units and the use of commercial.
Right. Just the rezon is what we're, you know, we're recommending.
Rezoning with the project plan, yeah.
Sometimes these are very specific.
You're right. And, you know, it's a project plan and it's subject to change. Now, if there's a, you know, and that's something, if they, if they come back and say, we don't want to do the commercial here, we want to do this instead, that brings us back through this process. But if they come and say, now these commercial buildings, these are our tenants. And now we're looking at this design that we think really works and with some changes. That's part of the site plan review and the PD review for that site where we're going to drill down into those details like we have recently with other projects. And then the residential, they'll have to do their own subdivisions like we just did with the Clayton Levitt Pioneer project. And we went through all those details at preliminary plat. And he still will have to come back for a final plat on that one. So we, we will have opportunity to drill down again.
Is that enough to change or? So do you want me to make re-motion since we deny the last one? I'll try to re-motion that mouthful. May, I would like to make a motion that we forward this application to rezone the Silverado property or Silverado subdivision lots one, two, and three from the planned development residential PDR zone to the planned development commercial PDC zone to the city council with an approval subject to the 14 staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Whitehead, second by Commissioner Harris. Still a roll call.
Yeah, we're, we're back, we're back. And keep an eye on city council agendas. The next step for that item, for those of you that were here for that item, will be going to the city council in December. So. I can't give a specific date yet. Keep an eye on the, keep an eye on the agenda on the city website.
Thanks, Julian.
Okay, we're moving on to item, public hearing item number 3A2. To consider the proposed rezoning and historic district overlay map adjustment for the property located at the southeast corner of Santa Clara Drive and Gates Lane, parcel six SC dash six two one six four three five. It's 2.97 acres. Granite Peaks Investment LLC is the property owner. And the proposed rezoning is, is to do, our, is to go from our, or the purpose of rezoning is, the project is to allow for R110 single-family historic district zone on a portion of the property. And with the remaining property of 2.54 acres being the RA single-family zone. And the applicant has requested the historic district overlay be dusted to, on the zoning map to follow the described zoning boundary. I'll turn the time over to, to Jim as we go same. We'll have Jim present. The applicant can add anything if they want to. And then we'll open the public hearing.
Thanks Chair Blake. Hopefully we can all hear. If it gets too loud, we can shut that door. So the applicant is Granite Peaks Investment LLC. They're represented by Neil Walter, who's here this evening. It's a request to rezone and historic district overlay adjustment to the zoning map. So there's two properties here. Actually, it's one property. They're looking to rezone parcel SC dash six dash two dash one six dash four three five. And that's what you see here. That's these properties. And they're showing a parcel one and a parcel two. And the idea here is parcel one would be in the R110 historic district and require review by the Heritage Commission for the two homes proposed there. Parcel two would be in the RA zone. And that would not go through the process, the process of the historic district review. And I'm going to go to the exhibit here because we have met with the applicant multiple times at our TRC at a staff level. And the applicant would be required to put in Benelli Trail to provide access to these lots. So the applicant owns this property in question, the blue, which would be R110, as well as the red, which would be RA. The total is, sorry, 2.97 acres. Point five two would be R110 with 2.45 being the RA. But there is other property owned by the applicant going this way. And there could be a future subdivision there as well. I just want to show you the concept plan that has been submitted so you can see the two R110 lots that would front. Uh, sorry, we just talked about Pioneer, Santa Clara Drive. And then three lots here, all at least a half acre in size to meet the RA zoning requirements that would front Benelli Trail. And so that road improvement would have to be put in. And then the area two is shown that's also owned by the applicant and that would could be a future extension of Benelli Trail, providing more access, you know, to the east, potentially with future access to Quail somewhere down the line. But we have to plan for the future and look at that. And so the applicant is also proposing that the boundary, which is part of the zoning map. So we have our city zoning map. The historic district overlay, that boundary is a layer on our zoning map. Okay? And so the applicant, I hate when it does this. It just shrunk it without me touching anything. The applicant is proposing that the historic district overlay of boundary follow the zoning boundary. So that line would go here and follow the zoning boundary. Right now, the line lies about in here like this and would come further down. But so that, it would follow the zoning boundary and allow those two homes to go through that process and being reviewed with the Heritage Commission and meeting those requirements. But the larger lots with potentially larger homes would not have to go through that process. And so I wanted to explain that. We did send notices out to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. The property was also posted as per state code with our great notices that everybody can see now with the QR code. We did not receive any responses as of the writing of this report. Now going to the general plan, you'll recall that the applicant came before us in July for a general plan amendment, actually the planning commission in June, and then it went to the city council in July. So it came to the planning commission on June 22 of 2023. They were contemplating a general plan amendment to allow for a commercial building on this site. And so there was language specifically within the ordinance that adopted the general plan amendment at that time. So taking one step back, you have the public hearing here. Some comment was received. Then it went to this city council on July 12 of 2023. And they adopted that general plan by ordinance. But it had that trigger mechanism in it that they had up to one year to rezone the property to match that general plan or it goes back. In this case, the applicant has elected to move forward with a single-family residential project rather than the commercial project that was previously contemplated. I'll let the applicant speak to that. He's here this evening and can share that with you. So the proposed rezoning application would allow for single-family homes on lots of 10,000 square feet or greater and lots of half an acre or greater. The proposed use of property is encouraged by the general plan, what's currently on the site or what he wants to develop to because he's choosing not to do the commercial building. As far as the rezoning consideration, 1718090, it meets all of those requirements. I, I can check all of those off. Item A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, which is in your staff report. State code considerations, section 109A205 includes requirements for rezoning a property and a zoning map amendment. To consider these, we have to hold a public hearing. We have to post the property. We have to send the notice out. We've determined that all state code requirements have been met. Our city staff recommendation is as follows. City staff recommends that the planning commission review the submitted rezoning and historic district overlay adjustment to the city zoning map to determine if the application is complete. If the application is determined to be complete, city staff would recommend that the planning commission forward a recommendation to the city council for their review and consideration of the application subject to the conditions. And I have the condition one in the staff report that addresses the zoning. Condition two is that the proposed historic district overlay adjustment be allowed to the city zoning map as the application includes property with frontage along Santa Clara Drive that will remain in the historic district with the following findings. One, that the rezoning is compliant with the Santa Clara City General Plan, section 3.4.1 residential land uses, very low-density residential. And that's for those areas where the half-acre zone zoning is. Two, that the rezoning is compliant with the Santa Clara City General Plan, section 3.4.2 mixed-use land uses, mixed-use residential, MUR. Three, that the R110 single-family historic district zone allows for homes on lots of 10,000 square feet or larger. And four, that the RA single-family zone allows for home, homes on lots of half acre or larger. I want to read this statement once again, just in case everybody wasn't here. But this is something that Matt and I have been working on and we just want to make it clear for the applicant as well as residents that attend our public hearings. This is addressed to the planning commission. Your role in considering the application before you is as an advisory body to the city council. For this application, the city council is the land use authority and will make the final decision to approve or deny the application. However, the record you are making by conducting this meeting, taking public comment, reviewing and discussing the application, receiving information from the applicant, being advised by city staff and professionals, and ultimately making a recommendation, all provide information to the city council that they may choose to consider when they are ta, when they are tasked with making a final decision. Under Utah state law, public comment by itself cannot be the sole basis of your recommendation. However, it can provide context, help identify concerns or questions about the application. Inform any conditions or findings you choose to include with your recommendation. Provide support for other evidence supporting your recommendation and so on. All public comment you receive is preserved along with all other information you consider. And as a legislative body and a land use authority for this application, the city council can decide how to weigh the information or recommendation you provide when they make their final decision. Because your positive or negative recommendation is not a final decision, it cannot be challenged or appealed by anyone. Appeal rights arise only after the city council's final decision and it is only that decision which can be challenged. So I'll turn the time back over to you, Chair Blake. The applicant is here. Mr. Neil.
One question before we turn it back over. Is the only adjustment to the overlay just so they won't, wouldn't have to go through the Heritage Commission on those other lots? Is that why, that's why we're adjusting?
Yes. And they're going to front on Benelli Trail, which is quite a bit south of that area. Right now, the way it sits, it would be more like outbuildings, barns and structures like that that would be in that part of the property. The other thing is the properties already have this zoning, but the zoning map is really funky. And we're trying to adjust the rezoner. The applicant intends to adjust the rezoning to make the property more usable. So if I take the cursor here, we have R110 that goes approximately like this. And then we have RA up here and RA down here. So the idea is, is just creating the R110 boundary here with the frontage, which makes sense on Santa Clara Drive, and then moving some of the other land to RA down here, which would front on Benelli Trail with other properties here and, and, and down below that are also currently zoned RA, which is a half acre minimum lot size. It's our largest. And, you know, as, as you know, some of the recent subdivisions have a variety of half acre to one acre lots just here in our backyard off of Vineyard and up the way. And so that's the thought process here. So they still would be subject to it for those two homes, which should be. They front on Santa Clara Drive and they face homes across the street that have met similar requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, we, let's turn the time over to the, we do have an interactive map. Santa Clara's got a good interactive map. So you don't often those are updated? Jim, is there a, is it a staff thing or?
You mean the zoning map?
Yeah, the zoning map, the drone.
Our zoning map that is on the city website right now was just very recently updated. I worked with Sunrise Engineering and some others, GIS, to get that done. So it's very accurate. Maybe one or two rezonings that we've recently done. But what you see is the accurate case right now.
And the general plan map, is that similar or is that kind of?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. I mean, we need, yes, it's more out of date. I'm sorry, it is. And that's something we need to change. But as you know, there's priorities and one of which is, we'll talk about it later, what the mayor and council did last night. But moving forward with our historic district guidelines and standards is priority one before the general plan at this point.
Okay, does applicant want to add anything to that?
And I did get a text from Mr. Walter. This is his wife, Michelle.
He was here, I saw him.
He, he had a seven o'clock commitment. So he left about 10 minutes.
Our, our attorney did too. He left me.
So.
Sorry, can you say your name then?
Yes, Michelle Walter. And thank you, planning commission, for being here. And thank you for hearing us present tonight. While there was support for an office building on this particular area, we felt like there would not be consensus on, you know, what the design of the building should be. And so ultimately, we decided that the current zoning is already residential. And we felt like many of the residents expressed support for residential in the public meeting. And we felt like if we came back with a plan that matches the current residential, that that would be more acceptable to the community. So as Mr. McNulty pointed out, just the way that the zoning is currently, you have R110 on that, on Gates Lane. And the rest of it is residential agriculture. So we're really just trying to move the R110 to, to those two lots that we'll have on Santa Clara Drive. And those two lots will front Santa Clara Drive. And that's what the current zoning is for the other homes that are right there along Santa Clara Drive. Those two lots would be subject to the historic district guidelines and we'll go through Heritage Commission. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant before she walks away? No? Okay. I think with that, we will move on to the public hearing and open the public hearing for any of those of you that want to come and comment on this item. You're welcome to. Similar to the previous thing, but remember, set your name and address and let's open it.
Justin Kaplan, 1454 Boyce Pond Circle. I'm in support of this. Appreciate the Walters, Michelle and Neil for so quickly making that change. I didn't mind the office building. I, I didn't like the look of it. That was my comment before. But I really appreciate, and I, I think they set a good example for developers that they don't have to have a plan in mind and then just stick with it and push, 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 push until it eventually gets through. And very quickly, they were able to turn around and decide, hey, we're going to do something the community supports. So I just wanted to say that. Really appreciate them and think they're a, a good example to what I hope other developers and things will do. So thank you. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Webster, 1485 Chapel Street. First, I would like to just publicly thank the City Council for the moratorium they placed on the historical district and the opportunity to get codes and ordinances in place. We are really grateful for that. Second, I would like to thank you as the Planning Commission. We realize that it's a Utah state law for us to come and talk to you instead of to the City Council, who are the people we've elected to represent us, and so we know you're volunteers, and we're really grateful, really we are, and appreciate what you're doing. The reason I came tonight was in support of Neil Walter. Many of us here came in support because a lot of times we only come when we're opposed, as you mentioned earlier, but we felt it was important that we came tonight to support this decision. With Neil and Michelle, we are really grateful for the residential agriculture being preserved as well as the residential. We're grateful to preserve those agricultural lands as well. I do, I am wondering, is it possible to ask a question about the previous thing that just happened? Can I, I'm just, I have questions about it, and I'm just wondering if that's possible.
I think because that item's been closed, I would have to, I would have to say no because that item's been closed. And I know that's what Matt would say.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going by what our attorney would advise us to do.
Okay, I just, I'm trying to make a sense of one of this for future reference in my mind, so. But thanks, and thanks, Walters. We really, really appreciate you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? With that, with that, we'll close the public hearing for this item, the rezoning. And I, I have one question on this. Is the, this, I'm pretty sure this intersection's still in the works of, or designs for a signal? Is that a question I can?
My understanding is that has been contemplated in the area, but I can't be definite. I've heard that rumor that on this end of town, that would be a potential site for a signal. That's as much as I know, Commissioner Blake.
Okay. That was my, that was.
Certainly this wouldn't warrant it by putting a couple of homes here.
No, but obviously, like, all the traffic on Santa Clara Drive isn't from Santa Clara, mostly. So I was just wondering if that, because it, to me, it was like, I'm not saying that this isn't right, I was just wondering if there was a contemplation from the applicants for like the mixed use, at least on the corner next to it? If it was going to be slated as a signal, seems like quite the high intense spot for a house in the end, but.
Well, and I can tell you, Neil could probably research that a little bit more and find out, maybe the one lot's built and the other one waits, you know, until it's determined if that's where a signal's going to go or not. It could take a few years, I just don't know.
They could always come back and ask for different zoning on that, too.
Yes, if that ends up being the case, but I don't know that at this point.
That was my, that was my one thought about this, is that that ends up being a rather really large, busy intersection, maybe somebody might not want a house there. Anything else, familiar else for this? Okay, with that, we'll, let me find my agenda here. We'll move on to item four, general business for this item, a recommendation of City Council for the proposed rezoning of this, and the historic district overlay and map adjustment for this, for this corner of Gates Lane and Santa Clara Drive. Any other discussion from the commissioners on it?
I can try.
This is the third time I've seen a project in the last couple of years on that piece of land. We've seen that about six or seven times, I think, they've been before us, and this, I think, makes the most sense for everybody, not just, you know, the landowner, it works for him, but especially those around. It's, it's good to see the community out, and I think it's best for that area.
It seems like a good show of good neighbor-ness by the Walters, to me.
Definitely not a financial win for him because he could have made, but I think he was looking at the best, what worked best for the city in that area, and especially the community, those around him.
Yeah, I don't have any other discussions on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning and historic district overlay adjustment to the city zoning map for property located at the southeast corner of Santa Clara Drive and Gates Lane.
To recommend approval?
Recommend approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Gosh, I don't know how to get to this, but, from Commissioner Kristen.
Walton.
Walton. Got to get better at this job. Thanks for electing me, by the way. Again, a recommendation from Commissioner Walton II from Commissioner Harris. All those in favor, say, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This passes unanimously for a positive recommendation for this change, so we'll move on to the next item of, let's see, public, this is a public hearing item, to consider a proposed code amendment to the Santa Clara City zoning ordinance, Section 17.92, Water Efficient Landscaping and Conservation Standards. This includes updates as recommended by the Washington County Water Conservancy District. This is to allow all city residents to participate in the Water Efficient Landscape Lawn Replacement Rebate Program.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake, and thank you for your patience tonight. I know that we have Doug Bennett here, our conservation manager with the Conservancy District. He has a couple edits to the proposed draft. It's the first time I've met Doug, and so thank you for being here, and so I think that's something we can consider. I know planning commissioners, or we did discuss this in a work meeting with the City Council on October 18th. We also had a work session with the Planning Commission on September 28th of 2023. Both the City Council and Planning Commission were in favor proceeding. Really, this is just a cleanup. As you know, we adopted ordinance 2022-05 in February of 23rd of 2022. We were one of the first communities in Washington County to adopt the recommended standards put in place by the Conservancy District. It's our understanding that on August 7, 2023, the board adopted a new resolution requiring the communities to accept update, updating their standards, allowing for participation in the lawn replacement or rebate program. So we have the actual changes in front of you. If you recall, we did go through this on September 28th. Really, it's just a cleanup, and I think what I want to do is make our recommendation and let Mr. Bennett kind of tell us where a couple of changes are needed, and then we can go forward there rather than doing this twice, if you're okay with that, Chair. And so Utah State Code, Section 1098205, includes requirements for a land use ordinance amendment. To amend an ordinance, the Planning Commission must hold a public hearing. We're doing that tonight. We also require a 10-day notice, and we've complied with all state statute and met all requirements by posting it on state and city websites. City staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold the public hearing and forward a recommendation of approval for this code amendment, Chapter 1792, Water Efficient Landscaping and Conservation Standards, to the City Council. By you forwarding this this evening, it would go to them in December for them to consider and adopt. With that, maybe we can invite the applicant up, or the representative from Doug, from the Conservation District, Doug Bennett, and he can kind of tell us where we need to make some tweaks, and then we can make those changes and forward that to the City Council.
Sounds good, let's do that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Doug Bennett, Conservation Manager for the Water District. This, first, I wanted to commend all the work that you've done in trying to insert these common standards into your ordinances. I, I just want to clarify where some of this is coming from. The state of Utah has gotten very involved in water conservation, and they've actually made hundreds of millions of dollars available for water development, and tens of millions of dollars available for water conservation. They required all of the big districts in the state of Utah to establish common standards for the entirety of the communities that they serve. So the very first thing I did upon coming to Washington County, I was asked to create some of these standards, review them. We've, we've had a number of vetting meetings with all seven of the jurisdictions that we serve. I think most of what we intended to be in our standards is already in your ordinance. So if you have any questions about any of these measures, feel free to ask. I did catch a couple of items that may need to be correct. They will need to be corrected, and they may just be purely ministerial, but in the section on definitions, if you go to park strip, there was just an errant insertion. A little farther to the Ps. There you go.
Here we go.
So we actually, somebody inserted "planning bed" into the middle of the park strip definition, so that's just a minor correction.
So you're, you're, you want to remove the word "planning bed" from there?
No, no, what happened, see where it says "park strip"? The definition of park strip is below the red text, a typically narrow landscaped area, so it's just, it's.
Oh, it's a flip.
Yeah, it's just a typographic.
We see it down, so the black text is above the red.
So park strip is the black text that needs to go up above. Okay, so we need to reverse it. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes, just the, the planning bed definition got inserted into the middle of the park strip definition.
Yes, I see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minor.
Thank you.
Okay. If you go to 1792040, and then to 7B1, maybe the next page after that.
Yes.
There you go. So the, the statement in B1 that says lawn is not permitted outside of an active recreation area, that only applies to non-residential properties, and that is actually captured again down in three. So the sentence that says lawn is not permitted outside of an active recreation area can be stricken. It's, it's redundant and out of context there.
So item, is it item one, B1 you're referring to?
Yes, B1, the very first sentence is not relevant.
Just remove the first sentence.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then if you, if you back up to 1790, oh, I'm sorry, 1792030, I just wanted to call something to your attention. So this would be in B, landscape standards, right there. So the city of Santa Clara has in its, has already in its ordinance a, an exemption where landscaping is being irrigated solely with private, non-municipal water sources, so none of these standards would apply to that. We were notified by the state of Utah that they will not give us money for landscape conversions in Santa Clara because of that exception. We, when we were notified of this, we told Santa Clara that we would continue to fund those until we could see if we could resolve this issue. We understand the district is not, if they're irrigating from a canal company or some other source, the district is not providing that water. I understand that's a disconnect. The state of Utah sees it as a land use regulation, not a water use regulation. They would like to see regardless of the source of water, that all of the landscape is developed to the same standard. I have asked the, the state of Utah, Department of Natural Resources, for more interpretive capabilities to work with our seven agencies. You, you know how difficult, you know how difficult your jobs are with all the different stakeholders. I've got seven different municipalities that all want to do slightly different things. The state of Utah is matching every dollar I put in as the Water District with a dollar of state money, and allowing us to give $2 per square foot to people that are willing to transform their lawn into water smart landscaping. Now the state of Utah said, in Santa Clara, they will not provide that additional dollar. So that, I, I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's something I, I mentioned to the Public Works Director. He said it was intended to keep it in the ordinance, but it could have an impact in the long haul as to how much might be available.
Doug, and I've heard some of this conversation with Dustin Mortson and our mayor, Rick Rosenberg, as well as legal counsel, Matt Enset had to leave. They're aware of that. That is something that will be decided upon at our next meeting with the City Council when they're in attendance. So thank you for bringing it up, but that is the one thing that there'll be more discussion on when it goes to them.
So this is related to me personally, because I have a canal shared water in my grass with it. So if I applied for like the district, I'd only get $1 per square foot?
At this time, the district has made a commitment to continue to give $2 because this came after we were already operating. So not only did Santa Clara get, get called out by the state, but the city of Ivans, Ivans City also got called out. So Ivans had a very minor issue, they, the state.
Ivans City, they're in the newspaper, having the greatest ordinance statewide today. That surprises me.
They got called out for using the term, "There shall not be turf in narrow areas," and the state prescribed that it had to say, "Areas less than eight feet wide." And so, so we kept funding the program continuously while we worked through this next iteration of the, of the ordinances, but at this time, Santa Clara residents are eligible for the $2, but we're trying to work with the state to see if we can get them to, is this a, is this within the jurisdiction of the DNR, or is it actually from the legislation that the legislature passed? Is it in a statute? If it's in a statute, we would literally have to go back to the legislature. If it's purely an interpretation of DNR, we, all of the districts in the state of Utah would like to have more discretion to work with the cities to figure out what's reasonable. So we're working on that now, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thanks, and we'll make you aware, Doug, I'd like you to attend our December meeting so we can have that discussion with the mayor and council. We'll make sure you get that date.
Yeah, we will be there.
I've got your card right here, and I'll be following up with them Monday.
That'll be great.
Is there, is there any other corrections?
Uh, no, no, otherwise, other than those minor things, the, the ordinance is very complete, very comprehensive. I think it contains a lot of detailed information that is above and beyond the standards in many areas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a, a public hearing item, so we're going to open this up to the, does she want to go first?
We can just open it up.
Let's open it to the public, this hearing for this item. I think we'd like to come forward and speak on it, on this ordinance change for the Water Efficient Landscaping. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item four, general business, item 4A3, consider recommendation to the City Council for this code amendment of Section 17.92. What do you guys think? Seems like, seems like it's what we've been talking about. I think we just recommend it with those minor adjustments from the Water District and move on.
Yeah, great job on this, Jim and staff. It's good to hear from the guys that are kind of monitoring this, that you're above and beyond everybody else, so good job to staff, and especially.
I appreciate that, and we're working hard, and I'm sure the council will make it work to where we get that rebate, because they want our residents to be able to participate, so.
Look for a motion then.
I can make a motion. I recommend to send a recommendation to City Council for approval of the proposed code amendment to the Santa Clara City zoning ordinance, Section 17.92, Water Efficient Landscaping and Conservation Standards.
I'll second that.
Do we, do we need to add the additional?
With the edits, and we'll add on that, yeah.
Has that, did not add that to the motion yet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we've got a, a motion by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Whitehead. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Jim, can we take a break?
Yes, let's take a five-minute break. Is that okay, Chair?
Before we move on to the, this next, next item's a plat amendment, right?
It is.
Okay.
A plat amendment and, yeah, an amendment to amenities, yes.
Okay, let's do a, do a break for five minutes, and then we'll move on to that.
Sounds good, thank you. Bathrooms are in the hallway.
How's it going, Rob?
Hey, good, Jim.
Had to wait a little bit.
Had to wait a little bit.
Comes with the terrafory.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm just glad it's an empty room nearby and you're, it's not a room full of people.
Yeah. Been under the heat lamp lately.
Wanna get going again?
We're all waiting on you.
We gotta start the roll of the audio again. Well, it's been rolling. We're rolling, rolling. Okay, let's start our meeting again after our short recess with um item, general business item number four A, or eight, four A four. Subdivision plat amendment for the phasing plant update for the Coyote Landing at Desert's Edge. Um the subject property is east of four hundred, east and north of Northtown Road. Robert Smith applicant.
Thanks, Chair. I'm gonna go through this. Um as you indicated, Robert Smith, the applicant, we've got two things we're discussing tonight, a plat amendment to phase one, the first twenty-four units of the project, which are townhomes, and a phasing plan update. Um and phasing plan amenity plan update for phases one, three, and four. Those are the phases that include townhomes. The other phases, um, well, and phase five does two, but phase two and six, as you're aware, are the apartments that were originally approved. Um and then, there's some changes have been made here. One of the reasons we're, or the reason we're here tonight is that the plat amendment, to amend the plat to include the front porch within the designated building envelope of each unit. Previously, that was not shown accurately, so I will go to the last page here. Oh. Do we not have that other drawing?
You might have skipped it.
Okay, we may not.
Is it not the pink one?
Oh, is it? Is it here? This one? Here we go. And so, the drawing here depicts the front porch area now being located within the building envelope. Is this the drawing that you sent, Robert, uh which before didn't, so clearly that's part of the structure?
Is there living space above the porch on the second floor?
No, no.
No.
But it has support poles and it's connected to the home and it has a location on the ground, so it's part of the structure. Um and then, so there's that part of it, and then if I go back, sorry, to the other portfolio, you're showing the rear area. Now you've changed that, Robert, to uh, sorry.
Limited, is it limited common?
Yeah, the whole entire area is limited common, so you've got the private, you've got the driveways is limited common, you've got the backyard, the entire backyard is limited common, and then you have the phase one common area, uh the amenity site rather than a limited common. It's just shown as a common area. And so, originally, uh the phasing plan, and I'm gonna go to that, um this was the original phasing plan. You can see all the amenities are within phase one. You know, we had phase one, all the centrally located amenities, the boat and RV parking as well up over here, um the public roadway improvements, um and all the amenities. You know, we had the pickleball, the tennis, the pool, the clubhouse, uh the splash pad or water toy feature. Phase three included um twen- forty-four townhome units, centrally located open space and a private alley. Phase four included townhome units and a private alley um as well. And so, the proposed plan, uh this is the original plan, the proposed plan or change would include this drawing. I'm gonna blow it up a little bit so we can all see it. Um and you can see the change here. So now, phase one would include the clubhouse, the main pool, uh which is this pool here, uh spa and pickleball courts. We now have six pickleball courts. The tennis courts have been removed. We know that uh pickleball is all the rage, right? So, um that's probably a little bit more usable space. And then, of course, the parking areas that they're showing here, and then the original parking area here. Phase three will include the water play area to be completed by the end of phase three vertical construction, and that also applies with phase one, those amenities. And then, phase four, um did note was depending on economic conditions, the phase four site area may change to artificial turf, pool deck, expansion area with shade structures and various games. This area will be completed by the end of phase four vertical construction. So, at a city staff level, we've discussed this, and we have a concern with the open-ended proposal for phase, the phase four amenity area. Uh city staff recommends that the applicant be required to come back to the planning commission and city council for approval of the phase four amenity area when the applicant has more information to share with the city. Now, I know the thought is to have the slides. I believe at Arcadia, he has one slide, and that's quite the nice amenity there with the lazy river and other features. I'll let him get into that. Here, they're showing three slides, so that may not be feasible, but that's what's been shown on the plan. And I think nowadays, there's a requirement for a lifeguard for new projects like this, where Arcadia uh, his grandfather doesn't have to have a lifeguard. Uh we did send this out to, well, neighborhood response. We posted the property and, and, and did the notices. Right now, Robert's the only owner. None of the units have been sold off, but he has to go through the process as per state code. All our city reviewing departments have reviewed it and are good with the project proceeding with the changes. We've met the state code requirement ten nine A six oh eight with requirements for subdivision plat amendments for that part of it. We noticed the property. We put uh, you know, the, the sign up on the property. We've met the state code requirements. So city staff recommends that the planning commission consider recommending approval of the plat amendment for phase one and updated phasing and amenity plan for phases one, three, and four for the Coyote Landing at Desert's Edge to the council, subject to the conditions in the report. And I just wanna go through condition four, that the updated phasing amenity plan for Desert's Edge be followed by the applicant and include the amenities. And so, items A and B address phases one and three. Item four addresses phase four with our concern that it come back at a later date if it does indeed need to be changed out. Um and that, that's what I have at this point, Chair, and the applicant, Robert Smith, is here to answer any questions you may have. This item is a public meeting, not a public hearing, so.
And this is, this is just like a, considered like a minor change to the PD, so it is, we do approve this?
Yes. Well, no, you recommend approval to the council.
Oh, so it does that to the council?
Yes, I got the advice from legal counsel Matt Enns, and he recommended with these items that it go to legal council, that it go to the-
Significant enough to go back through?
In his opinion, it was. Significant enough to go back to the council.
Um yeah, do you wanna add anything to applicant?
Hello, thank you for being here this evening. Robert Smith. I don't know if I have anything else to add to this other than um the, the plat amendment, that's pretty straightforward. That, that is a correction to, to get the building inside the building envelope. The, the amenity area change, I'm not trying to take away anything from what I've already proposed to, to, that I was, you know, committed to do.
See, yeah, it seems kinda like you're adding, right?
I, so I am adding the pool. The pool was never, the lap pool was never, you know, part of the original concept plan. So I've added that pool. So, so the idea is with the, with the, with phase one, uh phase one will include the, the clubhouse, the pool, the spa, the pickleball courts, all the landscaping, and then it gives me a little bit of flexibility with, with the next phases of amenities, which I hope to bring on in those timelines, you know, with phase three and with, with, with phase four. And phase four, well, let me back up phase three a little bit. That, that play structure there, it's hard to tell what that is and, you know, what that entails, but you imagine a big playground with water, essentially. There's three different slides in, in, in that phase three uh play structure.
Like a kit you can buy or something?
What's that?
Is it like a kit you can buy?
Uh, I mean, it's all, it's all custom made. There's a company out of, out of Colorado called Splash Tacular that will go through, that, that designs this and-
I know from some friends and family out of state of Arcadia, they really like the water slide there. He has one, so we're hoping there's room for at least one, but maybe up to three.
So, well, so, so the phase, what I'm saying with the phase three amenity, that does have three slides itself. The phase four amenity is also three more slides, so, so-
But those are the full water slides, right? These are the big boy ones, where the other ones are the kid area.
The phase four ones are the bigger ones, yeah. Um the phase four one is where we're, we're welcome to come back, welcome to come back and, you know, at that time for phase four, um to discuss that. Economically, you know, when I started this development three years ago, um I dreamed big, I hoped big, I, 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 you know, I wanna, I, I put a lot of money and effort into the amenities and getting them right. I feel like that's what draws people to come here and to buy in here and to wanna be a part of this community and stay here. Um so I'm not, I'm not trying to downsize it or take it away or, or, but um anyway, I'm cautious of, of, of what home sales will be like. Um will I be able to, you know, fund this like I had thought I would three years ago when the, when the market was completely different? Um I, I'm still very hopeful to, to, to do so. So that's why we've planned it there, we've got it in our concept. Um, you know, space, space-wise, we've ma- made room for it. We did have to get rid of the pickleball or the tennis courts, 'cause the, the slide actually took up more room than we originally thought. I'm a big tennis fan myself, but uh pickleball is all the rage now.
Those three, you probably could convert if you needed to, right, I guess?
To, to tennis, or, or-
I guess if you're gonna have fences between-
If it was gonna be a, a, a regulation tennis court, then no, you wouldn't be able to, and it, anyway.
Cody's heard this before. It's sorta funny, but you know, it's the largest growing sport in America for those fifty plus and also the biggest contributor to ER rooms nationwide, for those that pull muscles and get hurt.
Nice.
So, anyway, any, any questions I can answer from you?
Yeah, commission?
No, I like it, awesome.
Yeah, I think it's good. I think it's just like upgrade and it makes sense to have the limited common area go all the way back to the wall, you know, and then have, decrease it, so I think it makes sense to do it. You know, with the recommendations from staff or whatever we need, we need to do, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um if there's no more discussion, we can look for recommendation.
I can make a motion to recommend a, for approval to the city council, the subdivision plat amendment and phasing plan update for Coyote Landing at Desert's Edge with the conditions. Did the conditions change at all? The staff conditions?
No, no, sorry. They did not.
So without any additional conditions?
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Whitehead, a second by Commissioner Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh motion passes unanimously. Back to the agenda. Okay, item four B, planning commission approval.
Thanks for being patient with us, Robert.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Robert.
Planning commission approval for item four B, Alfredo's A wall sign located at three six eight seven Pioneer Parkway, suite four. Kelly Harward is the, the desk signs is the applicant.
And we'll see is Kelly on with us? Okay, um, may have been earlier, but we had a glitch, so I do not know. But this is for the last retail tenant in the GeoVango building two. At our last planning commission, we approved four, three wall signs for the Posh Blow Dry Bar, the Thrive Drift Spa, and the Jersey Mikes. This is the last tenant. They've had a, they've had a banner up there for a while, and, and I know folks are excited to get the restaurants in the community. In this one building, we'll have Jersey Mikes and Alfredo's A. Uh they're proposing one wall sign. Uh the code does not allow it to see ten percent of the square footage. They're close to it. Uh the ten percent seventy, seven hundred and twenty square feet of, of the wall, so ten percent of that is seventy-two square feet. They brought the sign in at seventy-one square feet. It does include, and that, that's with me calculating the hu- human figure as well as the copy. So we have a human figure flush mounted to the building with the signed copy. It's only one uh wall sign. They're not proposing one on the west elevation, just the east facing the parking lot at seventy-one square feet. Uh we don't have concerns. Uh planning staff recommends that the planning commission approve the proposed wall sign for, for Alfredo's A restaurant located at thirty-seven, thirty-six eighty-seven Pioneer Parkway, uh building number two, with two conditions, that the east building elevation wall sign facing the parking lot be allowed at seventy-one square feet with internally illuminated letters, white LED illuminated flush mounted to the building, and two, that a building permit be applied for and obtained prior to placement of the wall sign on the building. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair, and this one is a planning commission decision.
Thank you, Jim. Um yeah, any, any questions in discussion from the commission on this? Seems pretty straightforward.
They did have some, they were wondering why I was counting the human figure, and I said, because it's wall area, it's part of the sign.
It's lit.
Yeah, and it's part of the sign, so.
But they do have less than the other tenants with only one of them?
They do, yeah. So, um they could come back in the future for a west sign, but I don't think they will because the grade goes up, and that's exactly where a home would be placed at some point. Plus, they will get a, a sign, a placard in the um monument sign next to Pioneer Parkway. There's a little area for a ten squ- ten to twelve square foot sign for each tenant there as well, double-sided.
Does this one have this, this one does not have a seplayation to be turned off at ten?
No, because they, it doesn't face west, it's just east only on this one.
Is there a, like, distance?
I think it was just the direction.
Is it just the direction?
It's the direction.
The gentleman mentioned the signs on the silver-
We're gonna have to look at that. We may have to have them do a study of some sort to see if it impacts those residents for me to just slap that on and say that's required. We gotta look at the distance. In the case of GeoVango, that building that faces south with the existing three tenants is closer, quite a bit closer, and so is uh the Dollar Store. And, and then, the new building, the three we approved two weeks ago, two of which had west-facing signs, those are homes. And then, there's a building lot there that hasn't been built on, but it's zoned R one ten. Eventually, someone's gonna build a home on it unless they come rezone for commercial or something, but I, I don't see that for just one lot, so. So, distance-wise, I do not know. We'd probably make them submit a study of some sort. It's the only way we can tell. So, it's a good question, though. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's look for a motion for this item for approval or non-approval.
Just approval.
Just approval?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve um the proposed wall sign for Alfredo's A restaurant located at thirty-six eighty-seven Pioneer Parkway, GeoVango building two, subject to the two conditions noted in the staff report.
I can second that.
Got a motion from Commissioner Harris, second from Commissioner Walton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. On to the next item, which is approval of the, is that right? Approval of the, no discussion items for tonight, nine to five?
Um, just briefly, our next meeting is December fourteenth. We will only have one meeting in December on the fourteenth. Uh I, the agenda won't be as this heavy, but we do have a few items that we need to bring to you. So, our next meeting in two weeks, which is the twenty-third of November, is Thanksgiving. No meeting, and then we'll have one meeting in December on the fourteenth. And then, just briefly, uh as was alluded to or mentioned this evening, the city council did pass a temporary land use ordinance just last night. It's a moratorium for the historic district, uh a hundred and eighty days, uh where we won't be processing applications uh for different types of projects and, and, you know, includes a, a good number of things.
That applies to the overlay, just the overlay area?
Yes, it applies to the overlay, our historic district overlay area. And so that gives us six months um to put a set of standards or guidelines in place, whatever is decided upon. The mayor has organized a committee. Um it, he has decided who he wants to be on the committee. From the planning commission, he has reached out to Shelley Harris, and Shelley, you've accepted that um position. From our heritage commission, we have Mandy Gubler and Mimi McKenna. Mimi McKenna's been very involved, and the mayor has asked her to chair the committee. We have five residents from the community that will be on the committee. Um some live in the valley, some live in the heights. And then, we have reached out to Kim Campbell, who's an architect in our area. He's one of six that are on the historic register for the state, so he has expertise in this area. Some of you may know Kim. He's going to be helping us. Um Cody wasn't mentioned by the mayor last night. He thought he may have gotten out of the assignment, but Cody will be on the committee with myself. And um, and we will also have Kristel from our staff joining us, and the city manager, mayor, Matt Enns, as needed or necessary. So, and then we're looking to have a kickoff meeting the first week of December. That will be decided upon Monday, and an invitation will be sent out on that date, Monday. So, look for that soon. We have six months. We don't have a long time, so we'll do our best. That's all I have this evening.
Will the residents know about the meeting?
Yes.
Can they come and wa- listen?
They can come and watch and listen. Well, here's the thing. We have six months. It's a very quick process, and, and the mayor has organized and put a comedian, committee together of people. And so, sure, it's an open meeting where people can attend and listen, but we won't be taking comment or anything like that. And then, when we get later down in the process where we have a document, it'll have to go through the process of being adopted, like any document, through planning commission and city council. planning commission and city council to be adopted. But yes, it will be open to the public where you can come in and listen. The chair may allow five minutes at the end of the meeting for comments. I do not know. Uh, but the mayor's involved with legal council as well, so it would, you know, it's technical. So.
So, uh, Rick's, Mayor Rosenberg said that it was primarily to come up with commercial design standards. It's not to.
Well, here's the thing. There's a little bit more to it than that. Yes, commercial's going to be the emphasis, but while we're at it, we may have to make some revisions or tweaks to the residential as well. And then, one of the things is we have to define the historic district. Right now, that historic district kinda goes all over the place. Tonight, the decision you made or the recommendation you made is a good one to make it more confining to that zoning boundary. We have properties and we have people that were here tonight that are in that overlay, but I don't have to say it. They don't meet the intent or requirement. So, what clearly is our overlay and what should it be? And that's us going out and walking maybe a few times and, and getting recommendations and determining which street where that overlay line should go. You know, versus right now, it's kinda back and forth. It's kinda jagged and doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we need to determine where it should be. So, and you know what? If we don't get to it all, we adopt something and then we come back. Yeah, you know, but we'll do our best. That's all I can say. I'm trying to be positive about it. I felt really stressed like yesterday, you know, when, when, anyways, uh, it's, it's gonna be a big pool.
This is similar format to the design standard meetings we did, right? And now, this is kinda seems like similar?
It is, it is, but there's going to be a lot of people involved, the residents and a lot, yeah, and we're trying to keep the committee numbers down and residents are going to be allowed to come, but we have to get moving forward and people are gonna have to work together, you know, in a process to move forward. We're gonna do our best. That's all I can say. Last year, they took about, last time, they took about two years and we have what we have. So, we have about a quarter of, of that time. So.
Okay, sounds good. All right, item six A, approval of minutes from October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Um, yeah, look to approve those.
I can move to approve the minutes from, uh, I'm sorry, I took my glasses off. Hold on. Move to approve the minutes from October twenty-sixth as presented.
Got a motion?
I can second that.
A motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, I guess with that, we'll move to adjourn. So moved?
All moved.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you on the fourteenth of December. Thanks for being here this evening. Little bit longer meeting than we've had recently in the.